Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Calling the order, nine o'clock, item number one.
I make a motion to approve item number one is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item one on the agenda, approve the minutes of the September 11th meeting, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two.
I make a motion to approve item number two is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item two on the agenda, approve the cash disbursements, electronic payments, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three.
I make a motion to approve item number three is listed on the agenda, I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item three on the agenda, approve the so-stated request for payments for seminars or seminar approvals, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four.
I make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda, I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item four on the agenda, ratifying approve the transfer of Ashley Corbin from position of part-time corrections to the open union eligible position of full-time corrections for the recommendation of Ward and Shelp, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
You say aye?
Yes, aye, aye, aye.
Okay. Item five.
I make a motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item five on the agenda, ratifying approve the transfer of Richard Shil- Shies or whatever from position of part-time corrections to the open union eligible position of full-time corrections, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six.
I make a motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda, I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item six on the agenda, ratifying and approve the transfer of Kiana Brown from position of full-time corrections officer to the, going from full-time to full-time?
Corrections.
Sergeant, alright, okay, go on to sergeant, okay, for the recommendation of Ward and Shelp, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item seven on the agenda, approve the hiring of Brittany Smith of Montrose to the open full-time union eligible position of case aide and twenty-five per hour effective September 26th for the recommendation of children youth director Michelle Rosiano, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item eight on the agenda to approve the hiring of Isaac Cook of Hot Bottom to the open part-time union eligible position corrections officer for the recommendation of Ward and Shelp, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item nine.
I make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item nine on the agenda, approve the hiring of Nancy Wolf from Shopin' to the open part-time union eligible position of corrections officer for the recommendation of Ward and Shelp, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item ten.
I make a motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item ten on the agenda, design of the hiring of Leanne Overfield of Montrose, the open full-time union eligible position of second deputy treasurer, tax claim for the recommendation of Treasurer Jason Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item eleven.
I make a motion to approve item number eleven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item eleven on the agenda to ratifying approve the effective date of Walter Ramey and Frank Mulligan, security guards, from part-time, full-time as of September 11th, 2019, for the recommendation of Lance Bennett, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item twelve.
I make a motion to approve item number twelve is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item twelve on the agenda to ratifying approve the termination of Danielle Miloski from the part-time position of corrections officer effective September 23rd, 2019, for the recommendation of Ward and Shelp, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item thirteen.
I make a motion to approve item number thirteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item thirteen on the agenda, approve the planned maintenance program with B.E. Equipment Corporation of Quaker Town for the biannual maintenance on the baler and conveyor at the county recycling, had twelve twenty-five biannual, questions or comments?
I guess I would ask what the, what the plan states for how long, what was the length of the?
Well, let's see.
Automatically will be current.
For how long?
Uh, sometimes. Automatically, you're probably just looking at it. I'd like to make it for one year.
I'd like to amend my motion to include for one year.
This agreement is valid for one year from the sign and return date.
Okay. Well, it still needs to be included in there.
Right.
So you're still amending it?
Yes.
Okay.
You're okay with amending it?
I am, I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion amended, questions or comments?
Three time periods of one year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
I make a motion to approve item number fourteen is listed on the agenda with the term stated in the contract of...
Oh, that was Thompson Johnson, it's one year.
Of one year?
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item fourteen, planned maintenance program with Thompson Johnson Equipment for maintenance on our Toyotas at Siskiyou County Recycling, and those are forklifts, not cars, at a cost of twenty-two ninety-six fifty annually, and that's for a one-year contract, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item fifteen.
I make a motion to approve item number fifteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item fifteen on the agenda, approve and advertise the change of the regular commissioners meeting scheduled for December 25th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. to December 20th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m., questions or comments? I could've played Santa Claus that day, you know?
Still can.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Really the, the...
Yeah.
You didn't catch that date when you were passing it?
Nope.
I didn't catch that tape.
No, you didn't catch it, I'm kinda shocked that you didn't catch something like that first. You're slipping, you're slipping.
I probably wasn't there.
Oh, probably.
I usually take that meeting off.
Item sixteen.
I make a motion to approve item number sixteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item sixteen on the agenda, approve change order number one for Siskiyou County Correction Facility roof renovation in the amount of three thousand sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents, questions or comments?
I assume that's a change that's like bumping it up and not decreasing if I...
Yeah, we had, we switched the, made them go to a different glue process because the glue that was using had was, had too much off gassing, so we went to a more friendlier glue.
Google off gassing.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Item seventeen.
I make a motion to approve item number seventeen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item seventeen on the agenda, approve proclamation 2019 17, September 28th as National Hunting and Fishing Day in Siskiyou County, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item eighteen.
I make a motion to approve item number eighteen is listed on the agenda, I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item eighteen on the agenda to open award upon review of solicitor sealed bid for county building correctional gate control. My understanding is we only have one, Thompson Johnson Controls.
Why you move your bill?
Okay, so, unit price A is five thousand sixty-seven, unit price B is two thousand one hundred forty-eight, unit price C is seventeen thousand thirty-three, and the base price for the project is three hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, so it looks like it's a total of three hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars.
How many gates?
That's, replace existing doors, there's twelve doors, and all the electronics for the paging and speaker system, there's six units there, and there's also two gate operations that have to be replaced, and all that includes all the controls in the control room, all the electronics, all the hardware, the software, and everything. Okay, so it looks like it is Johnson Controls, and we'll go to them for the solicitor for review and approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions on that? Should've asked that first, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve item number nineteen and include upon the review of the solicitor, I'll second that.
Sorry. Okay, motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve nineteen, approve the engineering and architectural fee proposal by GPI in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-two for the new public safety building, I wanna say complex, it's more than one building, upon review of the solicitor, questions or comments?
Do you have the plans on display at the courthouse?
I have to come up with plans that I can display because of the 911 center, we can't display everything, but I will get some rough drawings available, and actually I think I might have a set that you can use right now, that may work.
Where is this building gonna be?
It's over in Gibson, it's behind the current state police barracks, we have fifteen acres of land that was donated to us, so we're using that, it gives us a close proximity to eighty-one, that way if there is anything major that happens in the county, of course eighty, interstate eighty-one will be the only road that'll be maintained first in the county, so...
But it's technically New Milford Township, right?
I think, yeah, it's in New Milford Township.
It's just the Gibson.
Gibson, excellent, yeah. Alright, that's it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, any, now we have a couple other meetings going on here today, we have salary board plus pension, but do we have any public comment on the commissioners meeting? Yes?
Last November after the election, I had addressed several problems I thought were inherent in the election proceedings, and there was discussion about it, and there seemed to have been some resolution of those items before the primary in May, however those problems were never really fully addressed, and I'm wondering if they have been addressed since then.
My understanding is that they have been, but what we will do is we will push this on into the election board and election office and have them give you a written response so that you get something that addresses it, do you have a, do you have the original or do you have a copy of what you?
I have my own notes on the issues, and the, the first item that was addressed at the training session for, prior to the primary, was a piece of paper that was inserted into the election training manual, which was not, I believe, given to every single person in attendance, but should've been, and one of the things that was brought up, well, there was problems with the poll pads being destroyed, there was the absentee director, the major issue that I saw was the fact that there were other things going on in the polling places that had nothing to do with voting, and if you go on the count of the state website, department's state website, it has training sessions laid out for people who are gonna be poll workers, and the bottom line is that the only thing that goes on in the polling place is a vote, you come in, you vote, once you finish voting, you leave, you are not allowed at any point to enter the building for any purpose, and you cannot, you cannot politic there, you cannot sell anything there, you cannot come in and cause a disturbance there.
Correct.
And you cannot come in to raise funds.
Correct.
So we have an issue, we had an issue, and I've heard that several others have had it, there are bake sales going on, there are people handing out business cards for their businesses to people congregating in the polling place, there are so many things going, public conversations going on, people going in and out of the polling place, on the primary election last May, we had the sheet from the voter registrar's office stating bake sales must be in a different room than voting. Well, that wasn't the case, we went in on a Monday to take in the, had to have to get the key to the polling place, and we had to let the people delivering the voting materials to the voting place, and when we left, the building was sealed, we thought, when we came in at 6:00 a.m. the next morning, we had found that the product, the produce, whatever was going to be sold that day was already in the polling place, which means somebody came in after the fact, they opened the door, they came in, they set up their bake sale, even though we had been apprised, it would not happen, but it did, when we told them they had to leave, and I was, at that point I was the judge watching because our judge was out ill, I had to have mano-a-mano fights with people coming in telling me that they were authorized to be there, and that they did it for forty, fifty, a hundred years, and that they were entitled to do it, and then I had people coming in who were part of the township, telling me that I had to allow them to do it, and they came in and out, I had no constable, I had no clerks, we had a judge of election, a majority inspector, and a minority inspector, and a heavy turnout because our district makes sure, our committee makes sure we get the vote out, and we were there by ourselves, we needed a constable, we didn't have one, and so that issue took almost a whole day, back and forth, back and forth, then we had people removing our election signs, our yard signs, the political signs that are supposed to be allowed, no, they had, they were removed, we didn't even know it until we saw it happening, and then we had to call the voter registrar to get them to put them back in place, because it's an offense to remove them, and when we told the person who was removing the signs, we rent this space, 'cause I have the last minutes of the commissions me, where we rent the polling places, which may or may not be legal, I don't know and I don't care, those signs were removed, and we were, we had to call again and have the voter registrar call them and say, "You put those signs back, 'cause these are, these are offenses," back and forth all day long, fighting this out, this was not just a polling place, this was like a wrestling ring, and it was, it happened almost a whole day, and the people involved in, in the opposition are all people who should know better, you don't bring a bake sale to a polling place, you don't remove signs, you don't come in and out threatening the people working the poll, you don't open a poll without a constable, and we had, we had, we, three people, three women had to feel this all day long, and then the piece de resistance, which we did not bring up after the fact, but we should have, the workers in Forest Lake at the polls did not receive payment for their services until five weeks went by, and I don't think that any other district had to put up with waiting five weeks to be paid for an eighteen-hour day, and that's another issue, so we were wondering, was the holdup in our, our pay for that period of time, was it a punitive measure against the people in Forest Lake, because if it was, well, that should be looked into as well, and I know that as of January, or whenever you've declared that you're gonna run for office again, you have nothing, you don't really have hands-on with your board of election, but they have a responsibility to us, tell us when your meetings are, bring your agendas, take the minutes, and be open to the public, tell us where you're advertising, if you're not advertising in the local papers, because we are attentive to that, we're subscribers to both papers, we don't see any of those, those adwords, so those are issues that need to be addressed, because we have another election coming up, as you are well aware, within a few weeks, and I don't know that we're gonna be able to say to people, "Well, this is a legit, this is a legitimate enterprise here," because it's not, when you're skirting the rules, skirting the laws, skirting the requirements, it's not a legitimate enterprise any longer, and, and that's what I'm gonna address.
Okay, what we will do is, we've made notes of everything that you've talked about today, we'll put together a letter into the election board and to the election office, we'll have the chief clerk handle this, because we need to keep our distance from this, from the election office.
One more...
And we will get you a written response and corrective action as to what's gonna be done to address all these issues and how it'll be done.
The written response should probably go to the newspapers, the, the alerts to what is legitimate and illegitimate at a polling place should go to the people who maintain the polling places, like the township, not necessarily township supervisors, but certainly to the fire departments, the church, whoever's, whoever's doing that, they should know these are the requirements, and this is what's allowed and not allowed, and that's the first thing, and then the, the judges of elections should be notified, constables should be sought after to make sure that, that decorum is at least maintained, we three women on that day were so oppressed and at, at times fearful because of what was going on, and we had, we could do nothing about it, except make a phone call, and that phone call is useless because it's in Forest Lake to here, so if we were in any kind of, we would not have had a prayer if any one of those harpies had decided to, to take action, and it came to a point several times that that was what we felt was gonna happen, and that's because your judges are not advised, the people who maintain the polling places are not advised, and it's, it's a free-for-all.
Okay, we will make sure that it all gets addressed, and we will make sure that we get the information back, not only to yourself, but also to the papers as to what's being done so that it's handled properly, and it's unfortunate that, you know, people can't follow the rules, things are usually pretty black and white when it comes to this stuff, and there is no real gray involved in it, and, you know, these things should not be happening, and, you know, it's unfortunate that people don't know the rules, so they think they can do what they want, or they do know the rules and they try to skirt around them, as you said, to do what they wanna do, so we'll work on that to make sure that our chief clerk and, and our election board and the election office gets information out to everybody, including those that are hosting the elections at their facilities, as to what the rules are and what they have to do and what they, what they must do, so...
You only have a few weeks to do it, and I'll tell you this, I, I'm gonna say it again, if anybody else went through what we went through, I find it very difficult to believe that you would ever find people who would be willing to work those hours for that little bit of money and suffer and undergo that kind of treatment, if you were working at a regular job and you, you, you had that happening in, while you were in their employ, the state would be in to find out what was going on in terms of fair labor standards, but because we're basically volunteers, anything can happen to us.
Right.
And it almost did, and it, and I'm not easily intimidated, but when I have three or four coming at me at the same time, I am intimidated, and I didn't appreciate it, and knowing that this situation is going to come up again, and nothing is, has been done so far that I can see or know, it makes me very, very worried.
On behalf of the commissioners, and I'm sure I speak for everybody here, you know, first we apologize for what you went through, that's not acceptable, and should never be acceptable for anybody that is working in a polling booth for the, for the county, trying to put out fair elections for our communities and, and giving everybody their, their given right to be able to go in and vote and not be suppressed or to be hassled or, or anything else as well as the workers there, so it will be addressed, and we will get something out very shortly on it.
Thank you.
Anything else under public comment on the...
I just make a comment on the constables, I'll bet about half the townships in the county don't have a constable, because the pay's so terrible, nobody'll take the job. I know we, our township has been trying for years to get somebody, and just, nobody wants the job.
Sounds like they need one.
Auditors are the same problem, we're down to one auditor in our township, how do you audit with one auditor, you can't legally.
Right, we will definitely put something in, in motion to try and address this.
I wanna make one more comment, and what I have said does not reflect on this, it had, because I know that you are attentive, it has to do, I believe, with people who are involved, who are just tangentially involved, and it's, you resigned your positions or had to in, when you declared, so anything that followed after that, anybody in that system after that are the ones who should be addressed, and this problem should've been addressed then.
I agree, thank you, anybody else? Can I get a motion to...
I make a motion to adjourn and...
No, I was gonna make the motion.
And open a salary board meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion to close the commissioners and open the salary board by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, and that's at 9:28 a.m., all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Salary board. Okay, salary board is open at 9:28 a.m.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 11th meeting, I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve the minutes of the September 11th, 2019 salary board, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, let's see, and...
I make a motion to approve item number two is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Christian Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item two on the agenda, approve the addition of the 2019 miscellaneous compensation schedule adding the election day assistant at a rate of a hundred dollars per day, twenty-five dollars per day travel allowance, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What'd you say? Okay, item three?
I make a motion to close...
Wait, wait, is there any public comment on salary board? Hearing none, item three.
I make a motion to close salary board meeting at 9:29 a.m.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, sent by Commissioner Warren, to close the salary board, all in favor?
Aye.
Now go to the pension board. The October 24th minutes warrant approved at the October 24th meeting.
Should've been read back and...
They were?
I didn't see where they were.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen retirement board meeting. Twenty eighteen retirement board meeting? Why is it the twenty-fourth instead of this last?
No, this is pension board.
Pension, okay. All right, um, I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve the minutes of the October twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen retirement board meeting. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
All right, so carry. Item one, item two.
Make a motion to approve item two, or to make it number two, um, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item two on the agenda, approve the nationwide option one guaranteed minimum interest rate change for twenty nineteen, it'd be three point five percent, twenty twenty, two point five, twenty twenty-one at two percent, and twenty twenty-two at one percent. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Make a motion to approve, item number?
Three.
Is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve item three on the agenda, approve the return of funds from Steven Janowski back to the retirement pension and have credit for service from August two thousand eight to November twenty twelve credited. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
All right, so carry. Any public comment on the, set, on the pension board?
I'd like to add, motion number four, to have the minutes read back to us for approval before we end this meeting.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Warren, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item four, to have the minutes read back, um, to have them approved. With that being said, can we have the minutes read back?
What we just...
Yep?
Retirement board agenda, September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, Commissioner Hall called the retirement board meeting to order at nine twenty-nine AM. President, Commissioner Hall, Arnold Warren, First Deputy Treasurer, Wescott, Chief Clerk, aye. Motion number one was approved by Commissioner Warren to approve the minutes of the October twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen retirement board meeting, seconded by Commissioner Arnold. Motion number two.
No, no. That vote, so...
No.
Vote was unanimous?
Yeah, unanimous.
Okay.
Motion number two was made by Commissioner Warren to approve the nationwide option one guaranteed minimum interest rate change for two thousand nineteen to be three, three point five percent, two thousand twenty, two point five percent, twenty twenty-one, two percent, and twenty twenty-two, one percent, seconded by Commissioner Arnold. Vote was unanimous, carried. Motion number three was made by Commissioner Warren to approve the return of funds from Steven Janowski back to the retirement pension and have credit for service from August two thousand eight to November two thousand twelve credited, seconded by Commissioner Arnold. Vote was unanimous, carried. No public comments. And motion number four for the minutes by Commissioner Warren for the minutes to be read back to be approved, seconded by Commissioner Arnold. Vote was unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Warren and sent by Commissioner Arnold, approve the minutes as read. Any questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to close the retirement board meeting.
I'll second that.
Need to include that in the minutes, too. So you need to make a motion to close the retirement board and include in the, in minutes the closing of the retirement board. Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Can't have minutes without, you can't have minutes of a meeting if you don't close the meeting.
I just did.
No, I mean, in the minutes. So we just approved minutes for this meeting, but the minutes we approved didn't have the meeting getting closed. You okay with that change?
I am.
All right.
Great.
So basically, what you'll have is the set, the next line, it'll say the minute that Commissioner Warren, um, made a motion to close the retirement board, Commissioner Arnold seconded. All favor?
Aye.
And it's unanimous. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. If I hang around for a minute, Stacy, I think I got something.
Cool. I'll be right back. I like some things.
You were missing the show, but there it is. What's going on back there?